Okay, good evening again. On our agenda this evening, we have public service announcements. We have a transfer of a liquor license at Hemlock Ridge Golf Club. We have department reports, water and sewer department, building department, town administrators. Under that, we have several appointments and resignations and acceptance of donations. We have all business, new business, correspondence, approval of minutes, citizens forum in adjourn. My voice seems to go every meeting. Got to stop smoking those cigars. Public service announcements, Priscilla?
No.
Mary?
No.
I just have two. A reminder on the community forum on the Sturbridge Housing Production Plan. There will be two sessions on Wednesday, February 26. One will be at the senior center, 1 to 3. The second one will be here at the town hall, 6:30 PM to 8:30 PM. It's, um, the people are looking for your input to help shape Sturbridge's future visions, goals, and policies for housing. The second public service announcement is early voting. It'll be the 21st to the 24th during regular town hall hours. So if you don't want to wait until Super Tuesday, you can vote early. Okay, now we do have a transfer of license request. Mr. Palmer here. Could you please sit? Okay, do you just want to explain to the audience what you're doing?
I'm just trying to transfer the liquor license out of my father's name into my name.
Okay. Has everybody had a chance to read the application? Any questions? No, it's all pretty clear, cut, and dry. Does somebody want to make a motion then?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
I have a quick question.
Jeff?
When's the course open?
Uh, should be 15th, I hope, April.
April 15th?
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you.
Before the snow.
No snow. We're all done with snow.
Well, we haven't had it yet.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good luck with the season. Okay, next we have department reports. Shane?
How you doing?
Good.
Submitted operation report for December and January. I'll start with any questions you might have on those.
Do you, anybody have any questions from the board? Priscilla?
I didn't see it, maybe I just missed it. Have you checked the schools lately for, like we had done last year?
Lead and coppers?
Yeah.
Um, well, it's with, this year, we do the whole town and, but you have to do them in certain months, and it's August and September. So this year.
So so far, they've been all right?
Yeah, there's been no, well, the high school had an issue where they had to resample, but it was more of a sampling issue than actual lead in the school. But the way it works, just so you understand, if the town samples come back clean and the school has an issue, then it's up to the school and the DEP to deal with it directly with each other.
Okay.
All right, it's only happened once since I've been here.
Okay. Would, if that's something that we sampled, would we, would we let them know that they have the issue and have to fix it?
By requirements, no matter what the results are, I have to send them to the homeowner, I have to send them to the school, and then I have to certify the DEP that they were sent.
Okay. All right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, anything else?
Okay, we did the camera work on South Regent of Town, looking for I and I issues. Good news and bad news, we didn't find a lot of places where the pipes are in bad shape. We only found two. I think we can fix them in the house. I don't have the official report yet, but I spoke to the guys who do the work on a daily basis, and it appears that most of the flow going there, and if, and I've done some research, if you look at the rainfall and the flow, they coincide, so it looks like the majority of the flow is going to be illegal sump pumps. So once that report comes in, I'll share it with you, and then we can decide on which course of action we want to take from now.
Okay, Shane, could you please explain to the audience at home what I and I?
It's infiltration to the sewer system, so it's not stuff that comes into pipes. It seeps, it's groundwater that actually seeps into the pipes, and it also comes from illegal sump pumps. Your sump pump is not supposed to be tied into the sewer system. And we can tell just by looking, you know, if, just by the color of the water, and on certain streets, the water's crystal clear. So, like I said, once I have that report, they'll identify the areas where they found that, and I'll submit that to the town so that they can have a look at it also.
Okay.
Okay. The other thing we're going to be doing pretty soon is we'll be taking the Stallion Hill tank offline and emptying that to do an inspection. We recoded that in 2009. It was expected to last about 10 years. Obviously, that 10 years is up. The tank is starting to show some signs of failure, so we'll empty it, they'll go in, do a full inspection, and make some recommendations on whether we can repair it and prolong the life of the tank, or whether it makes sense to replace that tank. So we'll be doing that in the upcoming weeks too. I will coordinate that with the fire department, just so they know that our biggest storage tank is offline. Something we've done in the past, so I don't, I don't see it being that big of an issue unless we were to have a really major problem, so, but just so you're aware that we will be doing that, and I'll let Jeff and obviously Butch know when, when we're going to do that work also. Other things that we've completed, I did the bio solids report for the EPA. That's been submitted. The town reports have been submitted. The T2, tier 2 reports have been submitted, and I started working on this consumer confidence report, and I hope to have those out to the DEP for their approval in the next few weeks. Besides that, just a lot of maintenance in the buildings. Plants are all running well. Yeah, there's plenty of water out there. The wells are full right now, so things are going pretty well.
How about all the hydrants?
All the hydrants are working. We had, we repaired the one on Maple Street that got hit, and then there was one in front of Teddy G's that got hit, and we repaired that one also. So when I say all the hydrants are working, all the public hydrants that we're responsible are working.
Okay. Anything else from the board? Anything else for us?
No, I'm good. Thank you. Have a good night.
Status of the Fiskill Pump Station project?
Um, I saw the, the final plans, and I believe it's out to bid right now as we speak, so we'll wait to see what the bids come out, and then we'll go from there. I do believe that the, in speaking with Butch, because we had to switch over electrical services, that could be a delay. We're working with the electric company to find out just how much of a delay that's going to be. So we're definitely moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Have a good night.
Two, two. Okay, next we have Mr. Burleyame, Building Department.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I haven't been here recently, so I actually have November, December, and January's report. November and December, I'll do them together. I, I've got, like I usually have, I break it down. Daily operations are similar, like they always are, issuing permits and stuff. Residential permits, there were, the big thing is, I guess, three single-family homes, 246 Holland, 250 Holland, and Levin McOpen. Then I have new commercial permits. There was five of them. No real big ones. I think the ones that, the one that I would want to point out is that 369 Main, which is the old curtain shop, and they're dividing it in half, so they have their small boutique. There is quite a few commercial projects that, that might be coming up that I'd, I'd like to keep the board informed of. I listed them. I'll hit the bigger ones, like the Blackington, possibly five apartments upstairs, they're talking about. The Leo, the Leo Gas and a Technology Park on Packer Road, they're actually, I mean, a lot of people have asked me, so if they ask you and you're coming down 20, heading west, and you look to the right and you see all those trees gone, they say, what's going on? That's where that's going. It's going to be a transfer propane area with a storage building. They're going to have their office there, and they're going to rent some bays out, I believe. The Thai Place, Thai Place, they're going to expand the back. They have sprinkled the building and everything. On Brookfield Road, it's still, they're still talking about a barber shop going there. As far as, I listed arcades, that's kind of forgotten about for now. Another interesting thing, we've had a couple meetings on it, is Sturbridge Premier, active adult community, 55 and older, it's manufactured homes. They're talking like maybe 78 units. If you go where Jack's Gases or Edward's Gas, I should be saying, to the right of that, up on the hill, they showed us some preliminary plans that, that shows, they're probably three or four circle turnarounds they have, and then they have like the manufactured homes on each side. Some of them are single wides, some of them are double wides. It, 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 it looks like they, they may well be doing it, you know, they're going to pretty soon go to planning. So it's in the works. The charter school, the expansion, they call it Phase 2. There's 16 units. The building's going to be roughly 66 by 234 feet. It's like 15,000 square feet. What it is, it's going to be for the grade 6, 7, and 8. If you look at the charter school that, that's there now, this one's going to be to the left, looking at it from the front, and it's going to angle a little bit, coming back towards the entrance. They're going to change the, the route that you go in through the guard shack and everything, they're going to move it around a bit. As far as completed commercial projects, the interesting one probably is the Sawdust Cafe at the Horn of Plenty. They'll be opening, I'm pretty sure, this week. It sure, you know, appears it, I know the lights are on tonight and everything.
Right, he said the 21st on his Facebook.
Yeah, yeah. I had put 20 on here, but it kept changing the date, but very soon it'll be opening. Training, we've been dealing with the Acela training, with the permitting system. That's coming along. Jeff has been talking to me about 551 lead mine. Matter of fact, he talked to me about it this morning, and Jeff, I did get a contact to that, that, that person. He came in the office today. He took out the building permit application. He has talked to a few demolition companies. He, now, this is what he promised me, so I'm hoping it happens. He said within a month, it'll be gone. And he's aware of conservation, of wattles, what they have to do there. There was a letter. We showed him everything today in the building department, so I, I think, I think it's going to happen, I really do.
Well, we'll talk tomorrow, some more.
Yeah. Okay, that's for that month. According to our records in the permitting systems, there was a grand total for, for the month of November, there was a total of 47 permits. The total was $8,587. And for the month of December, there was 173 permits, and the total was $7,552. And that takes care of those two months. I still have January, but do you want to ask questions about those two months ago?
Anyone have a question?
I have one. Nelson, you say on Pine Lake Resort, opening 2020 with a question mark.
They're saying, they're hoping to open in, in June, July.
Is there anything holding them up?
Uh, I, I know they're doing their sewage plant, but I don't think there's anything really holding them up, other than they're finishing that up.
Right, I think it's the sewer treatment plant.
That's it? That's all that's holding them up?
I still hear spring, so.
Okay. Because I know his intent was spring.
Right.
Yeah, it could be this spring.
Okay, thanks.
Went to January? Okay, January, again, same daily operations. Residential permits, it's, you know, loose, HVAC systems, pellet stove sheds, a lot of remodeling basements, stuff like that. New commercial work. I did make a, oops, on that first one, that, should have said, that new sprinkler system for high storage should be that Dexter Russell. It's, I believe it's 174 Charlton Road. And what they did in that back room, it used to be where they made the candles and stuff there, that building, they, they put high storage racks, so they had to change all the sprinkling systems, and make them, put them up higher, and the coverage was different. Of course, 501, probably most people know, the old Heritage Hotel. The lot was cleaned up, leveled, looks nice. That was taken care of. Another interesting one, 198 Charlton Road, there's a Phoenix Home Lending that's going up on the second floor. If you go upstairs, it's to the right. There's going to be 30 to 40 cubicles, it's like 4,844 square feet. They got a small little cooking area, a couple offices, but most of it's open with the cubicles. I think the good thing about that is it's filling up the building, which we're glad of. It's a nice building, it's, it's nice to see it being filled up. Right now, what they have on the first floor, if you walk into the back, is that physical therapy, therapeutics. To the front, they have that Harrington Healthcare, which takes up most of the front. And upstairs, on the second floor, they also have the Allstate, and you will first go up the stairs from the side, from the parking lot, they, they, they take up most of that, about quarter of the space up the front. And like I say now, that, the newest one, that Phoenix, Phoenix Home Lending will be taking the backside, they may even take another area, so it's all good, you know, and it's filling up the building, so I think that's, that's a nice thing to be aware of. Another biggie that looks like it's going to be in the works, and I know, you know about it because of the TIF and everything, and I know that's on the agenda tonight, that New England cold storage. That building is like 84,000 square feet, 74,000 is going to be freezer space, roughly 14 garage gate doors there. It's a pretty good-sized building. What it is, is people are going to come in with their frozen foods, they're going to, I guess, leave it there, and then they'll, they'll go from there and transport it to wherever in New England they want to bring it to. It's kind of like a transport center. Training on that month, I did go to Millbury. They happen to have a training on lithium batteries, which was pretty good, because they're talking about lithium batteries for, for backup at the cold storage, which was brought up at the meeting. Another thing that was brought up, we don't know if it's going to happen or not, there was an express natural gas. What it is, it's tractor trailers, and they, they have tanks inside of them with the gas, and other trucks would actually pull up in a full, fill the trucks up through the trailer trucks in the back, and that was where the old truck stop is. I think, okay, for that month, the permits, the grand total, the permits were 66, and the total was 5,984. That pretty much covers most of the important things that we're seeing coming. So again, questions?
Questions? Nelson, I just have a question on, we haven't been getting the printouts, like we used to, of all the permits and where they are.
Okay, okay, I'll talk to Cindy.
Yeah, it would be informational.
I thought she was asking, but you probably, I'm sure you're right.
Yeah, it's, it's been a couple reports.
We, since we've transferred it over to that, on the platform, they've been working it out. I, you know, I'm hoping once we get it worked out, it'll, it'll be, you know, it's a lot different than the old one, but hopefully you got it, you know?
Yeah, no, we would appreciate it. Do you have anything else?
No.
Okay, have a good night.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have some action items. And the first one, sad to say, is to accept the resignation of Thomas Ford as Chief of Police of the Sturbridge Police Department, effective May 12, 2020. Somebody want to make a motion?
Well, what happens if we don't accept it?
You'll just walk out.
I very sadly make the recommendation to accept the resignation, but I, I also need to say that he has served our community for so many years and served it so well.
Is there a second?
I'd like to echo the same words that Selectman Jim has said, you know, been a phenomenal, phenomenal influence on our community, and with regret, I'll second it.
Discussion, Mary?
I'd also like to thank Chief Ford for his many, many years of service. His heart has always been in the community, and he's going to be very difficult shoes to fill. But I wish him and his family well, and God's blessings to you.
Okay, likewise, Tom, you and I go back the 34 years. You look much better than I do, but you started out younger, but we wish you the best. Okay, we had a motion, second, all in favor? Okay, next we have.
Can we do my report?
I always do that, yes. We can do you.
But that was much more important.
Yes.
Okay.
I always forget those.
Change your minds based upon our?
What we said.
We're not going to make it easy.
Did you want to see if the chief had anything to say?
Chief, do you want to have anything to say about that?
I think it's probably, we can just be for a second. This is not going to be easy. It's probably one of the hardest decisions that I've had to make in my long career here, and it doesn't come, come without a lot of emotions, and it wasn't an easy decision to make, but I have to take into consideration the family, the betterment of my children's future, as opposed to my own well-being, and I think that I've certainly been given a lot by this community, by, by yourselves as board members, and I hope that I returned it back in kind. It, again, it's been a very difficult decision to make, and it didn't come easily. It came with a lot of discussion behind the scenes, but it's a next chapter, it really is. I'm not done working, I'm just going somewhere else and hoping that I can take everything that this community has given me and put it to good use somewhere else in the future for the good of a lot of others, including my family. So I'm very thankful for everything that this community, including yourselves, have done for me, have done for our police department, and I think you'll be in good hands, and I think that we've got a, a great, great group of public safety officials in this community, and great support staff, and I don't think that we'll have to worry much. I think we have a very good system over there, and, and I don't think you have to worry about anything. It'll be good. And hopefully, I left it at as good a place as it was when I got it. So thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll see back up in a while, but Jeff has his report.
I'll be brief. The budget meeting for the board and the FinCom, we're looking at March 21st, Saturday. Okay, Carl Hartwick is our new National Grid representative. You met Kevin Shaughnessy the other evening. He's moving on to something else within National Grid, so Carl Hartwick will be our new rep. On the diocese this evening was a picture of our website with the top of the page as pictures rather than narrative, so we'll try that. It's a $900 cost to change that to a scrolling set of pictures. If that doesn't prove to be effective, we can revamp the website for about $4,500, but we're going to try that and see how it goes. You received a letter from DCR about Old Mill Pond, and it's asked for certain actions to be taken by mid-March of this year. We're going to ask for some time, an extension of time. We're going to look at either removing that dam or breaching that dam. That way, we don't have to maintain it or inspect it or anything else. So we'll be asking for an extension to provide any subsequent reports that they may seek. Also on the diocese this evening is a history of the snow and ice expenses since 2015, the last meeting when we authorized, what do you call it?
Butch.
No.
Oh, deficit spending.
Deficit expending in that account. There was a request for some experience on that spend, so we, that's on the diocese this evening. And Restaurant Week in Sturbridge is March 16th to March 29th, so we're encouraging people in, in the region to come to Sturbridge and eat in the restaurants. I'm sure Kevin can answer any questions when he comes up later on. So that's all I had this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, now we have an appointment, chief.
I bring to you this evening James Cogis. He was selected as a candidate for the position of police officer in the town of Sturbridge during our most recent process. We're fortunate to have Mr. Cogis here with us, has become part of our team. He's a very extensive and honorable law enforcement career, having served with honor and, and being a decorated member of the Connecticut State Police. He left the Connecticut State Police as a sergeant in charge of the K-9 unit. Upon his departure from the Connecticut State Police, he joined the Stafford Connecticut Police Department, where he's served since 2015, again, attaining the rank of sergeant, and still working with a dog, canine dog, down there as well. And he served many different units within the state police while he was there, as well as being a resident trooper, which is essentially the town police officer for some of the other communities that don't have full-time police departments. He holds a Bachelor of Science in Justice and Law Administration from Western Connecticut State University. We've completed his background check. He's completed a pre-employment physical and psychological examination. He possesses all necessary certifications. His exemption for academy waiver went before the Mass Police Training Committee this morning, and I should be hearing back on that. We do have a letter acknowledging that he does meet the standards, it just needs a formal vote of that committee. He'd be, be able to begin regular shifts if appointed, first thing tomorrow on the 19th of February. So through the chair, the town administrator, I would recommend appointing James Cogis to the position of police officer effective February 19th, 2020, with the hourly rate and benefits of a three-year police officer.
Okay, and Jeff, you met the candidate?
I have, and I would wholeheartedly endorse the chief's recommendation.
Okay, any questions from the board? Someone want to make a motion then, to concur?
So moved to concur with the appointment of James Cogis as a police officer for the Sturbridge Police Department, starting rate of third-year police officer.
Okay, which is 3295. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, congratulations.
Congratulations, welcome.
Thank you.
Good luck to you, thank you. Okay, welcome.
I neglected to say that, that you brought a pretty extended group here. He's got, he's got all kinds of family, coworkers, peers from the Connecticut State Police, and the very own Scott Ravier, who worked together with him when they were on the State Police together, so, you know, I want to thank everybody for coming to show the support, the family support. Thank you. We certainly have a great candidate that's come to Sturbridge.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you. And the family.
Thank you.
Okay, have a good night, people.
We're going to empty out your phones.
I know, that works. We always think we have a good audience, and then they leave.
Short-term, short-lived.
Okay, now.
Dane's not here this evening. He, he had to work.
Oh, well, that's still okay. I mean, I think, well, some of us have seen him on.
Okay.
Okay. Probably doesn't matter, but I'm switching C and G, only because one's a resignation from a position, and the other's the appointment to it. So someone brought it up to my attention, it's best to get the resignation first.
Makes sense, it does.
So G is to accept the resignation of James Cunniff from the Planning Board in the Betterment Committee, effective February 26th. Committee effective February 26, 2020.
So moved, but that's another one. I think 17 years, I believe, on the Planning Board and countless other years on everything else, so... That's a tough one, too.
Yep. Do you want to make a motion then to...
So moved to accept the resignation of James Cunniff from the Planning Board and the Betterment Committee effective February 26, 2020.
Okay. Do you mind adding the words "with regret"?
With major regret. And thank him for his 17 years of service on the Planning Board. And I don't, I'm unfamiliar with how many on Betterment, but, or rephrase it to say, for all his years of service to the town of Sturbridge.
Is there a second?
I'll second that with regret and thank him for all the time that he's donated to the town. He's really done a good job.
Well, I'll go to him. I also want to thank him if he's watching tonight. We don't often have residents who are as loyal as this particular gentleman, you know, particularly coming back after some difficulty and continuing to serve on the Planning Board was really exemplary.
Right, I know I've worked with James on the Planning Board, but, not on the Planning Board, sorry, on the Betterment Committee, but through the years I have, you know, been at several Planning Board meetings with him and he was always thorough, you know, and really dedicated.
And always a gentleman.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so we have a motion, second. We've had discussion, all those in favor of accepting the resignation. Okay, four to nothing. Okay, now we go to C to concur with the appointment of Dan Labonte to the Planning Board effective February 26, 2020 and ending June 30th, 2022.
So moved.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, four to nothing. Okay, and then there's a request to concur with the appointment of Wally Hershey to the Housing Partnership for a term lasting from July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2022.
He's here this evening.
Oh, would you come down for a minute, please, Wally? I've known of you, but I've never met you face-to-face.
Hi.
Okay, anything you'd like to say?
I want to thank Jeff Bridges for the appointment and I hope that the select people concur. This is something I've been interested in for a long time. It wasn't my primary reason why I saw Jeff, but it was when he brought it up to me that this was available and he would like to point me to this. It struck a nerve and it was something I'd like to be able to do.
Yeah, it's an important committee and we've been lacking in full membership and we really need it with the new housing plan that's coming out and everything. And I know you're quite into Sturbridge history.
I am, I am very much so.
Okay, anything from the board? Somebody want to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, four to nothing. So, welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
We'll get you some information on when they meet, we'll get you in touch with Gene, who's staffing the committee and get you started.
Very good.
Awesome.
Thank you all.
Have a good night. Okay, next we're asked for a concurrence with the appointment of Leslie Wong to the Tax Assistance for Low-Income Senior and Disabled Citizens Committee for a life term. Any questions from the board? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, next we have another resignation of Tyler Breeze as a dispatcher of the Sturbridge Police Department. He's got his letter in there, he's got another job.
So moved.
Okay, that's okay.
Sleeping at the wheel.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Then we have the additional item, ask for concurrence with the appointment of Sarah Turwillinger, is that how you say your name?
Turwilliger.
Oh, Turwilliger. We'll just call you Sarah, okay? To the Personnel Committee for a term from July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2022. Would you like to come down, please? Okay, you want to just tell us a little bit about you? It's basically for the audience at home.
Okay, so I moved to Sturbridge about two years ago as part of a move with FedEx. I'm the Director of Operations for FedEx in Massachusetts. So if you have any complaints, get out of my way, that's fine. And through the course of my career, one of the things that Jeff and I spoke about was the current administrative structure that you're working through. That's sort of a forte for me. So I came up through administration in FedEx, actually started as a driver, and then came up through administration and dock in administrative management. So throughout the course of my career, that project sounded very interesting to me that Jeff and I had discussed and I asked to volunteer for the committee.
Okay, any questions from the board? Okay, would somebody be willing to make the motion then?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have a request for approval of a tax increment financing economic development incentive agreement with New England Cold Incorporated. Good evening, Kevin.
Good evening, last one in the room, so I think I'm up.
Now you have to stick around.
Good evening, everyone. So I have provided for you the draft agreement with New England Cold for their TIF agreement and with their storage facility on Six Picker Road. It is our standard agreement. The only differences are the years, so it's a 10-year TIF, starting at 100% forgiveness on the...
Real estate.
On the real estate above the base valuation. It drops down 10% every year for 10 years. They agree to tie into our sewer plan and they agree to create 18 full-time jobs. Other than that, the plan is fairly straightforward. We did find out yesterday, or today, I should say, that they are not getting state credits, but they will be getting, if this goes through, they will get local credits for the project. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions the board has.
Doesn't it usually go hand-in-hand though, state first and then us?
It can. The challenge with this project is since it is a new project, it's a startup, the state is not willing to make that investment at this time. If in the future they go into a Phase Two, then the state would be willing to have that conversation again. But they do encourage us to, you know, they are supportive of the local TIF.
Okay. Now, on the Local Incentive Review Committee, who's on that exactly?
That is made up of myself, the town administrator, the town planner, the town assessor, and the board-appointed Selectman Gimis to be the fifth member.
Okay, planner.
And that's as per the policies that this board adopted back in August.
Okay, any questions from the board then? Does somebody want to make a motion?
I can do it, I sat on the board, I don't think it matters.
No.
So I make an emotion to approve the tax increment finance for New England Cold Incorporated?
Okay, and to place...
And to place it as an warrant article on the annual town meeting of June 1st, 2020.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you.
18 jobs is really good.
Yeah.
It's a beautiful project.
Technical, they're high-end jobs, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, the mix, it's a mix of management and, you know, high-skilled work, so it should be very beneficial in the long run.
Very good, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, I actually have the next item as well. I can leave if you'd like.
We have no trouble accepting money. The next is request to accept Cornerstone Bank's donation for the cost of the Sturbridge business breakfast on March 3rd, 2020.
And we encourage you all to join us.
So moved. Okay, discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Have a good night.
Yes, you too. We're out anyways.
Thank you, Kevin.
Okay.
Seasonal population.
That's right, it's right in order.
Pick them.
Please?
Yeah, no, I know you have a a number of 1,000 more, but...
That's not accurate, actually.
No.
You should have asked the chief when he was here.
Yeah, I didn't think of it, but... Oh, and what did he say? He doesn't remember.
Right.
He's the one that used to always give us the number. But anyways, it's, needs to be higher because if we ever got a request for another seasonal license, it would have to be 5,000 residents more than what we have. So 1,000 wouldn't cut it, so...
Okay.
Yeah, and another reason is, having gone to that Citizens Police Academy, for example, one of the things that they had said there is the Sturbridge exit off the Mass Pike is the busiest exit of all the Mass Pike. And that flows out to 84 and 20, as we all know. So our seasonal amount, including the flea markets and including the tourism and all, they estimated at the time when we were at those classes to be in the 20,000 range, 20 to 22.
So we're including transient traffic?
Yes. Because it's seasonal, we are affected by it. Our police are affected, fire is affected, everybody's affected.
Yeah. Because it's astounding the number of people that come and stay. I mean, it'll be even more so with the new Pine Lake.
Yes, that's right.
So Priscilla, what number would you like to pick?
I would go with 18 to 20,000 because of what the police have said in the past. And I'm not picking a number out of my hat, I'm just basing it on what I was, what we were told in that class as to how impacted we are in the season.
Funny, I know it didn't come up last year, but, you know, we had an interim, but I went back for the next, previous two years, and I know we did it, but I couldn't find it in the minutes. But, so, no, 20,000 sounds reasonable.
20 increase or 20 total?
20 total.
20 total.
So 10,000 increase.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so do you want to make a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion that the seasonal population increase reflect the figure of 20,000 total.
So if we add that to the 9,500, whatever.
9,000, whatever.
Okay.
To reflect the, sorry, can you repeat that?
The seasonal population increase to be 20,000 total, which, meaning that it includes the population.
So whatever the difference is between the 9,500, whatever the now population is...
And the 20.
In the 20 is what we're adding. But this just calls for the estimated population.
Yeah.
20,000, yeah.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay. So Jeff, when the state has us, do a head count out there in the summer. Which road do you want to take?
One, two.
Okay. Next, approval of observed holidays. Now, I was really confused...
Yes.
On this one.
Right.
Because I assume this was Thursday, December 31st.
Yeah.
Thursday, December, yeah, 31st, that's what I meant. That's a three.
It is not.
The typewriter was off, the ribbon, we were out of ribbon.
Slipped.
Yeah, we were out of ribbon.
I have trouble with, what's the reasoning to close at 4:00 PM on Tuesday, December 22nd?
Because we're, we, the, the Christmas Day is Friday.
Right.
We're only open four hours anyway.
Right.
So you, we're gonna pay us four hours, seven hours of holiday pay on a four-hour workday. So to get the extra three hours, we would close early on that Tuesday.
Doesn't make sense to me. Tuesday is normally a long day.
Right.
And it should be, still. The only, the only thing we should be paying for is the holiday pay for Friday and the half-day...
And the holiday.
On the 24th.
That's fine.
Well, I think, can I just, Mary? I think the reason, I can't speak for staff, but I think the reasoning is they're entitled to a full day of holiday pay on Christmas. But that day, they're only required to work a half a day. So they're taking their other hours and putting it on to Tuesday. Because Friday's not a full workday anyway for them. Am I expressing it?
But it's a holiday and they'll get full holiday pay.
Even though they don't work a full day?
Yeah.
Right, and I, and I kind of, the staff has come from where Mary's coming from, yes, they'll get the pay, but they don't get the hours off.
I get that.
They're only required to work a half a day anyway, is the reasoning. They would have had a half a day off regardless.
Right.
Right, but...
But aren't we a service industry?
But the thing is, we're going down from 39 hours to 28 hours doing it that way.
A holiday.
I understand there's really no consistency to a lot of this.
Yeah, there isn't.
Right.
There isn't any.
And what throws it off is when the Tuesdays and when the holidays and when the Fridays hit.
Now, they're working all day Wednesday, correct? Till 4 o'clock, I'm assuming, because it's not here, but I'm assuming they're working all day Wednesday.
Wednesday is the 23rd.
Third.
Of course.
Yeah, that's a full day.
Yeah, because now normally they get paid for a full day even though they work four hours normally, right?
Friday?
Yeah.
No, no, because you're working the extra hours on Tuesday
In the...
and you're only scheduled to work four hours on Friday.
I'm okay with the shortened day on Tuesday because it's right.
I mean, I can, it sounds right, but we're, we're getting a 28-hour week, that week.
But we're paying for 38.
Because of the holidays, though, they get paid holidays.
But excuse us, it's closing at noon on Christmas Eve, which has been something you've done every year. That's what's, that's what's closed, you know, you're losing four hours there.
But are they...
I think you're only losing four hours.
They're gonna get, are they gonna get, okay, so they're closing at noon on Christmas Eve?
Right.
They get paid only for the four hours or don't they get paid for the whole day?
My understanding is they're only getting paid for the four hours. I don't know, I can find out and bring this back to you.
No, I'm just curious.
Yeah, because...
Four hours, okay.
Well, no, I, I'm not sure, I'd have to find out.
Yeah, because to close...
That makes it, um... I don't know how much this affects, but it makes it a week where people who can't come during the workday are not going to be able to come that week.
I understand.
I mean, I understand it's a holiday, don't miss, don't get me wrong, but if they, if they could have come on a Friday, they would have, but on a nighttime on Tuesday, those who could can't. And that puts them off for a week. I don't know what difference it makes, I'm not certain, but, um... Because is this gonna open the door to Thanksgiving? This is the beginning of the iceberg.
Well, I have no intention of bringing the day after Thanksgiving to you.
And when is the 4th of July this year?
I have no idea.
It's on the 4th of July.
Yeah.
Friday.
It's on a Friday. Okay, so there's nothing extra to that, right? Shouldn't be.
We didn't anticipate that, no.
If it's a Friday, it's... It's a Friday.
What is it?
Tuesday?
What, the 4th of July?
July.
Oh, it's a Saturday. 4th of July's a Saturday.
So we'll celebrate on Monday.
You're gonna do it Monday or Friday? You're gonna do it Monday or Friday?
Friday, I think.
Friday?
That's how it reads.
But Saturday holidays went on Friday, Sundays went... that's been the rule.
That's how I've always done it.
Yeah, that's how I've always done it.
Okay.
Well, isn't it on that sheet?
No.
It is. There's a list of the holidays. Friday, July 3rd is Independence Day, yes.
Oh, that other one, okay.
Yeah, second sheet.
But it doesn't say what... oh, you're taking it Friday.
Mm-hmm, taking it Friday.
Yeah, that's the way the Personnel Handbook reads. Close it.
I think we're only down four hours, which is the closing at noon on Thursday, right? Because Christmas Day and New Year's Day, because they're paid holidays, we can't count that as hours of them not working because they're paid holidays.
Oh, no, I wasn't...
Oh, you didn't count those 16 hours in terms of...
No, I was just...
Because you got 39 and 28.
I was looking at a normal day.
Oh. Okay. I think we're down... I think we're down four hours.
I believe so. Because if it was on a... if Christmas Day was on a Tuesday...
They'd get that...
Or Wednesday, Wednesday.
They'd get eight hours off of pay.
Seven and a half or whatever it is, yeah.
So, why don't you check and see then how the pay is on that Friday?
Okay, we'll bring this back.
But also on the close at 1:00 p.m. on New Year's Eve, that came up last year, too. And I believe we voted no, because it's not quite the same kind of holiday as Christmas.
But that's the same rationale as the 4 o'clock on... or the 4:00 p.m. on Thursday. It's seven hours. Since New Year's Day is on Friday, you're only getting the four hours off. So, the way to get the other three is to close that one on the Thursday. And that total gives you the seven.
Well, check on money.
Okay.
This was a big ado last year, too. Okay, next, we have a request from the Conservation Commission to use Wetland Protection Funds for Cedar Lake, the problem with the drainage from the Mass Pike.
Can I just go back to the other one for one second? Maybe at some point, instead of doing... you know, we've been doing it annually depending on when the holidays fall. We should probably just come up with how, you know, we're gonna do it.
Policy.
Policy. So, then everybody, you know, is on the same page.
Every year.
And staff doesn't have to feel, you know...
Like we're out.
They're not... Like they're not getting the benefit of their bargain if the policy is if a holiday falls on a Friday, this is how it's handled if it falls on a Thursday. And then we all know upfront. That's what I think, anyway.
I agree. I agree. Then every person who's working knows exactly how to plan for their holidays. Totally agree.
Okay, so we do have the request from the Conservation Commission to use $4,200 from the Wetlands Protection Fund for retaining a third party to review and the inspection on drainage improvements adjacent to Cedar Lake. Someone want to make that motion?
Do we know how much?
$4,200.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that one. Okay, yeah, so moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Next, we need a vote to pass the proposed zoning amendments to the Planning Board to begin the public hearing process. Is there a motion to send the zoning amendments back to the Planning Board?
So moved.
You even heard them.
No, I heard them. I just was thinking. I had a question on one of them, and that's what I was looking for.
Oh, right on. Can go to the public hearing?
Yeah, I know.
Okay, second. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, next, we need to adopt Town Administrator's Goals for 2020. There are 11 priority ones and then 28 other ones.
No, the 11 are in the 28.
I was just gonna say the 11, however, are in the 28.
Yeah, I'm good, but, you know, 50 is a little pushing it a little bit.
Just more boxes to check, that's all.
Okay, anyone have any questions?
I guess my question would be, are there any of the ones in the 28 that don't appear on the 11 you would like to move to a priority goal? Number 22 to 28 are new items we added at the retreat. Would any of those be significant enough to appear on the priority list?
I didn't know we mentioned 22.
Yes, I did. I brought it up. It was based upon the New Boston Road housing construction.
Oh, that's right.
I think number 27, because it comes up a lot.
Okay.
It comes up often, especially as this season gets warmer. I think we need a policy to make it clear for everybody and not each one individual. Just a thought. I don't know how everybody else feels.
I agree.
Because right away, there is a state law that you can't have liquor in town buildings.
So, what does that mean for town property?
Well, it's still the common and...
That would include that, correct?
Cemeteries.
That would include it, correct?
No, you can't drink in buildings, public buildings. You can't drink in the schools or town halls.
Right, but like I know the smoking policy, for example.
Oh, yeah, you can't smoke on...
Can't smoke on school property either. That's what I'm saying. So, obviously, you can't smoke in the school buildings. So, does alcohol apply to the town property, like the town common?
I think it's written buildings.
I'd have to check.
Yeah.
But that's the... that's what will be part of the policy development is. Buildings versus property, land.
Do you need a motion to add that? Or is it just discussion?
Well...
I think we all agree.
Yeah, and then when we adopted this enhanced outreach with the business community, I mean... I think the town does a good job.
I just took that off my notes from the day.
Yeah, no, personally, I... The build... the businesses sometimes are very reluctant. I mean, there's been a lot of meetings that have involved or trying to get input from businesses. And you get two people there, you know? I mean, I don't think it's a...
I agree.
I think it's something we should do all the time.
Yeah, we do, and I think Kevin does, you know?
I agree with our chair. By putting it as a goal, it gives the impression that we're not doing enough. And personally, I think we really try very hard with our businesses. We created a new position, which is the Economic Development Coordinator, whose very job function is to reach out. And I don't... I don't think we need to... I think we need to stay on track, but I don't think we need to do anything differently than what we're doing now in terms of our outreach.
Okay. So, now we're down to 27.
Yeah, but I didn't personally see any that I would move up to top priority. I mean, they're all... They're all there.
All right.
Other than the board?
I agree. I just think 27, that's all.
Okay, so do we have a motion then to approve the Town Administrator's 2020 goals?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Now, speaking of that, we never evaluated Town Administrator last year because we had interim.
Right, that's one... that was one of my old business questions, so...
So, we need to do it.
Have at it. Let me know how it turns out.
Oh, you'll be the first to hear. Andrea would need to get us the forms. They've got to be someplace, okay?
Like for a review?
Yeah, Town Administrator's review. And then... So, you'll have them. You can pass them out at our next meeting.
Don't you usually email them?
Yeah.
You'd like me to email them?
Mary, are you here?
Yeah, but please...
Are you here the next meeting?
Yes. It's the one after that.
Ah, okay.
If you can email them by Tuesday. Okay. And then if the board gets them back by the 17th, it's not too late. I mean, they're late anyways.
Yeah, will you be here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, and then if the board gets them back by the 17th.
Like you'll have three weeks of them, you mean?
Yeah, because I have to compile them and everything, and then... Does take long. There's no... I read quickly when there's murder in it. They shouldn't be.
What?
Maybe you should just explain to him, to Jeff, how we do it, because...
Yeah, I'd like to do that, too, because I haven't...
You were here?
No.
No, because you were with Ted.
Right.
Yeah, in truth. Yeah, okay. I'll explain in a minute, but, yeah, and then I usually have somebody... Go over them. Priscilla, you've done it before.
I have, yeah. I think Mary has, too. I have, yeah.
Yeah, would either one of you be willing?
Either way.
It doesn't matter. Your choice doesn't matter.
Nope, I'm not picking.
You've done it, Priscilla. You can continue to.
Okay, all right.
If you have time, otherwise I'm happy to.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, so by the 17th to me, I'll make copies and give them to... after I calculate them. And then we should present it on the May 4th.
April 4th or May 4th? Can you get them back?
It'd be April.
April 6th. April 6th, okay. It's before election, just in case.
Yep.
I'll be home watching.
Or I'll be home watching. She'll be home watching.
Okay, now, there's a form...
I don't think there was anybody else running.
Yeah, somebody took papers out.
Oh.
I don't know who, but somebody took papers out. It's a form, and it's got different categories, you know? Interaction with boards and committees, interaction with the public, interaction with other public leaders. Budget presentation. And they have five categories, poor, all the way up to excellent. And there's room for comments, which are usually probably more important, you know? Because there's nothing worse than getting an evaluation with good, 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 good without a comment. Or worse than that, poor, 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 without a comment, you know? It's kind of self-explanatory, but you can always call. It can help you out.
That's good.
Okay.
Just in time for my one-year anniversary.
Yep. That's true. So, it can withhold your pay.
And then Mary assembles them and comes up with a, you know, if somebody gets two excellence and two goods, then the... right in the middle is the very good, and it's kind of like a...
Add them up and divide them by five, usually.
Yeah. I mean, I... and you can do what you want, but I've always shared my individual one with the Town Administrator during my three terms. I don't know if all select people do that. That's kind of left to your own discretion.
The individual evaluations are not a matter of public record. We've had that from the council. The compilation one, we do in public, and that's public record, but... Should be fine. Okay, next, we have old business. Priscilla?
I do. Actually, you just answered one. And the Town Administrator said that the budget process was in... was for the 21st. So, that was the second one. But I would like to ask that we get the book for the Saturday at least a week in advance. Because we need to look at it, and if we have questions of department heads, we can ask them. And that allows us to come to this and not waste as much time. I assume it's like 9 to 12, like I'm assuming we're following the process we followed in the past.
Right.
Whatever the board's pleasure is.
Yeah, because it worked well.
Okay.
We used to be here till like 2 and 3 o'clock in the afternoon.
Of course, a lot more boards and committees came in.
Everybody came.
Yeah.
And now it's narrowed down, and it works a lot better. It's very effective. Okay, I just have one thing that I have to kind of address, so that I want to ask the Town Administrator for guidance or whatever. I'm still bothered by the other meeting, the last meeting that we had, and it's my... what's bothering me. And I went back, and I looked at minutes from the Planning Board, and they throw it to us, too. And I guess I'm having a hard time understanding how an elected board is allowing a appointed board to make the policy decision on two marijuana shops. And my biggest problem is this. All of these that came before us are all viable entities. They've all worked hard. They've all put a lot of time and effort to bring a great presentation to the board of selection. And we opted to hear four. That was our choice that we made back in August. And, I mean, any one of them is viable. I think that now they are in a bad position. And the fact that it's first come, first served puts everybody in a tough spot, and it puts them through expenses that they may not have had to incur. And they can't do anything until they get the signed host community agreement. So, in the meantime, they all scramble. And I just have a hard time watching companies put out money that they don't have... they may not have to put out if they weren't chosen. But they're going to have to in order to hope to be chosen. And I just... it doesn't settle well for me. And I don't know what can be done, if anything, but I just don't think it's fair to them. I don't think they get the same shot. And I did talk to a couple of them, and they came to this with the understanding that we were going to make the decision. And now they feel that the rug's been kind of pulled out a little bit to like first come, first served, do your thing, and whatever. And it brings me to another question is, are all the host agreements going to be given to all of them at the same time?
Once the edits that were requested in the final draft are completed by KP Law, those agreements will be sent directly to the applicants.
They will be mailed?
No, emailed.
Emailed, okay. The same time?
Yes, they'll all be done at the same time.
Okay.
And then it's really up to the applicants to turn those around and get them back to KP or to me with a yes, we approve of the agreement in its form. If they do, then they'll be here for your signature. And it really depends on when we get those back and when the board convenes or you're available to sign those is when those go back to the applicant signed.
So, it still waits for us to sign them?
Yes.
Now, do all of us have to sign all of them?
I think I would just need a majority.
Mary? I know this is your own business, so I don't want to...
Oh, please, no.
It's along the same lines.
Go ahead.
And I could belabor this. I also thought that the process right from the beginning was us selecting two host agreements. And I'll leave it at that. And there will be one that's out that's jumping through hoops for the Planning Board, who's not ultimately going to get the special permit, so... I also asked council, because I did not vote for the retail establishment in the old Paletti's for a number of reasons, including the threatened lawsuit. And council said we don't have to sign. They just need... I specifically asked that, because I won't sign that host agreement.
I'm not signing that, wait.
And in the past, like I don't think there should be alcohol on the common, for example, and I don't sign those licenses. As long as there's still a majority, which there would be a majority. So, that was my understanding from the attorney, that we are not required to sign one that we did not vote for.
There's only one thing that ever came through that required a signature of the full board. Other than that, everything is... Other than that, everything is just a majority of...
I will only... You can put this in the record for me. I am only signing for two. That's what we were charged to do, and that's all I'm signing for.
And I would also request that we sign them in open session, because they're... Rather than having them just sit there, because there were three, and they were little more than edits. They were kind of like substantive changes that Andrea did a good job of summarizing in the minutes that were adopted by the board that I had suggested. And I got to... We got to make sure the language is in there that was requested, you know, so... That's it, that's it.
Well, okay, when they're final, then we could set up a time convenient...
You can just be here at the next Board of Selectment meeting, and they'll be available for you to review before the meeting.
The first part of March?
Whenever. Really, it's going to be up to the applicants to get them back, because they'll have to review them and accept them.
Yeah, I mean, they may say, you know, because I asked for clear language, saying when there is a material breach of this contract, we can terminate the host agreement. And I don't know if they'll all agree to that. That's what we agreed to.
Right.
So we...
Okay.
You know?
And I just have one question in reading over everything. On 253, they said they had desserts, and they had brownies and ice cream. Brownies can be packaged. Is the ice cream packaged, or are they serving it on the premises?
It's not for consumption on premise. You can't consume marijuana products on premises.
I understand that, but I just need a clear answer in the sense that is the ice cream going to be packaged as everything else is? In other words, because sometimes in some of these places, you can eat it on the premise. I know we can't, but there's a lot of things that we can't that are doing. So my issue is, is it packaged ice cream?
I'll find out.
Thanks.
My understanding is it is.
I would assume so, but I'm not making any assumptions on any of this.
Okay.
And that's it. Thank you.
All right.
Chase, old?
I have no old.
Mary, old?
No.
And I have none. Priscilla, new?
No.
Chase?
No, no.
Mary?
I am going to meet with Max, the high school student who's the Democratic High School Committee. And I just wanted to make sure that we... I don't want to speak out of turn, that we are going to have him and a couple of his members at some point in the future when we don't have a busy agenda.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, we did say that.
Okay.
I hope they do know, though. It is state law that voting age is 18.
Oh, yeah, I think they're... I sat in on the committee meeting, and I guess he's pushing... You know, they know that it's state law. I think there's groups that are trying to advocate for 17.
In the state level, too, yeah.
Yeah, they're behind that.
Hey, I have nothing new. Correspondence?
He's not here. I've got it here, if you want. Oh, you do it.
Oh, well, we just got February 3rd from Central Mass Mosquito Control Project, our budget notification for the coming year. February 7th, a letter from MMA on the list of legislative breakfast meetings. And also from the Tintasco Regional Schools, we got notification of the public hearing for fiscal '21 elementary school budget. And we also got a copy of that budget. Anyone else get any correspondence? Okay.
Just in time.
You look like you've had a fun day.
Okay, next, we have minutes. Okay, we have the minutes of February 3rd. Any corrections?
I've got a few.
Mary?
Okay. I know, Andrea, these were hard minutes, so just bear with me, that's just a couple of changes. On page 2... Hold on. 258, 257, 258.
Do you have the page of the minutes?
Here, you can have mine.
258. I'm sorry, I'm just looking like 259. Ah, crap, 259. Okay, got it. All right. At the second paragraph, Vice Chair Dowling stated that she's disappointed there weren't any traffic studies done. Add the sentence at the end. M. Dowling shi...
Is that very into the paragraph?
Yes. M. Dowling shared with the board a news article about a cannabis retail store in Leicester and the traffic resulting from serving 1,000 customers on its opening day. Period. She further stated that the possibility of 1,200 customers total would cause too much traffic in Sturbridge. And then in the following paragraph, under the discussion, I don't care where we put it, after the motion where we're discussing it, at the end, say, M. Dowling stated that the town could loosen stringent requirements in a host agreement in the future, but would have difficulty adding them once the host agreement is signed. Okay, and then...
Do you happen to have your notes?
I'll give them to you. Yeah, they're all over, but I'll give them to you at the end. And then on page 260, under the discussion of caregivers, fourth line down, scratch, who at the townwide vote only wanted two marijuana establishments? And insert instead, who voted to ban all retail establishments in the 2017 town election? As well as the bylaw that limits special permits to two. I don't have any other changes. Well, I was trying to make it neat for her, but that's it.
Okay, anyone else have any corrections? Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? So, Mike, now that you're here, we're going to leave.
Motion?
I just came for the Citizens Forum.
You're the only one.
Okay, Priscilla?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Wonderful.
I was going to say something. Forgot what it was. Was it five that came to me?